Hi, Joe.
Hello, everyone.
I think so. It's still connecting. I'll let you know in a minute. We approving a minute. Oh, okay. Okay, that's we got it on the agenda. That's why I was asking. Oh, got it. Okay. None. Oh, okay, your last email. Yeah, yeah, that's okay. Okay. Four, it's seven o'clock. Did they show up? Oh, we will call to order this special meeting July 12th of the Adrian City Planning Commission. Folks, the only thing on our agenda is a work session for the ongoing comprehensive plan. We have Joe with us from Giffords and Webster and Joe, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. So, as you know, at the last time I joined you, we were looking at the full draft of the comprehensive plan and essentially at the time, commissioners, you know, asked that they be allowed to spend a little more time with the document and provide some comments. So that's really what we're here for tonight is to hear your comments on the draft and you know, make sure that we've got a master plan that looks and feels and says what you want it to say. So if there's any part of the master plan you would like me to discuss in any particular detail, I'm very happy to do that. Otherwise, I think we can get pretty much right into, you know, planning commissioners thoughts on the document.
Joe, did you receive comments from any planning commissioners other than myself?
I received yours and we have implemented a few of those already and then I've got the rest of them in kind of a master document that I'm planning to to collect all the comments in. I did not receive any others. But anything anybody has?
Commissioners? Got feedback to consultants.
Go ahead.
Gordon, go right ahead.
Well, I'm looking under the section on community history. My hat, my is on, I think. Asked that question, it's not the biggest deal in the world, but there's a kind of the second paragraph, first paragraph is very short. The second paragraph says that Adrian College moved to the city of Adrian in 1859. I didn't know that they had ever been anywhere else other than city and I know they got founded in 1859. So does anybody else?
They were previously in Leoni, Leoni, Michigan.
Leoni, Michigan.
Leoni, Michigan. Yep, moved by Oxcart in the middle of the night.
Well, I learned something tonight.
President.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Just one, just one, yeah, just one, maybe two, no more than two.
Okay, that's cool. I just, I just didn't know, so.
While we're on that paragraph, I think the official founding date is 1825, not 1826, although there's some dispute about that. But since 1825 is on our seal, that's probably what we want.
Oh, the city, the city. Let's be consistent.
If we're gonna lie, let's be consistent about it.
Yep, yep.
I think that's the first time Addison Comstock ever does it at the state of Michigan and he bought the land that he was gonna use to
Okay.
lay out Adrian in.
That's cool. Bob, did you have something as well?
I didn't have a chance to read your document, so I don't know if this was part of yours, but in the public input summary with the general comments, it says that they're listed in no specific order. But is there a way that we could develop some kind of order, like the most commented or in that way, that way, when this is looked at, we can see what people actually the most was referred to, so we know what the importance was of those that inputted on it.
Like categorizing them and grouping them or something?
Well, not necessarily that, but just the ranking. So like address blight, like if that was the most comment, the most listed comment, like put that one and then if provide more senior facilities with second, move it from seven to two, like actually put them in an order. Yeah, based on how many times they were listed in the general comments, that way we can actually, when the document is reviewed, you can see what was important at the time or what was the thought during the public input summary.
What page is that on, Bob?
116.
116. Okay, so you're in the appendix where things are
summarized. Page 116.
Thank you.
It says, you know, the respondents were also asked to leave general comments at the end of the survey.
Yeah.
And we listed 13 different things that they that they mentioned.
Oh, oh, sure. Okay, all right. I know.
Just give it, give it some context in terms of what was most important to people.
Because for people to leave a comment, that's pretty important, because I don't leave comments, so that takes effort. People. Um, and then I had a question about on page 129, the thoroughfare plan. It's interesting to me that besides Main Street, there's little north to south major arterial or even minor arterial road. That's considered, I just didn't know. Like to me, that's interesting. And the thoughts of are we only traveling east to west in Adrian? Or?
I think part of it is that some of the, it is an interesting point because you're right, there really isn't. There's basically one direct route through town. That's a major thoroughfare and otherwise you're kind of stair stepping and there's a lot of, a lot of east-west connectivity.
I just think of the high school in McKenzie Street, why that wouldn't at least be something a little more.
Of course, Bob, these are, these are those that diagram, that map with the the brown and burnt orange.
Yeah.
Colors on it, that's descriptive. I mean, that, that is what are defined as the major thoroughfares currently.
Right. I'm just wondering why others aren't like more north and south. Aren't. Or like McKenzie Street or well, like that's just, it's just interesting to me and I was wondering if there's something that suggested why, that's all.
Sorry, it's about road classification, you know, in the classic sense, so roads are divided up into arterials, collectors and locals, and so McKenzie would be classified as a collector because it local streets feed into it and it in turn feeds into an arterial.
Who classifies that? That's my question.
Our engineering department?
No, I mean, at a higher level than that, I mean, these are classified, Joe, in Act 51.
Yeah, they are. Yeah, and one of the reasons I think that McKenzie Street is designated as a collector rather than a minor arterial is that there's a lot of residential frontage directly onto the street. And therefore widening that road for a greater throughput would be quite a challenge because you'd basically be taking people's entire front yards. So I think that, you know, from a planning perspective, it's probably going to remain a collector into the foreseeable future. You know, I think that on the east side of town in particular, getting north to south is pretty much a matter of stair stepping your way. There's really not much of a direct route on the very east edge of town. Unless you're kind of going outside of town, there's a, I can't remember the name of the road out there. Goes a little outside, but but yeah, I think it's just kind of the way this, the city historically developed is that there's just not a lot of direct north-south routes through the city. And I'm not sure exactly. I mean, it's partly just a descendant of the plating process, the way the, the way the city was planted. Particularly on the east side, you have some that are direct east-west streets and then it goes diagonal to the north of that. And that kind of breaks up your grid pattern. And in, and a lot of southeast Michigan, the grid is sort of that, you know, mile road grid. But when you get into this part of Lenawee County, the mile road grid is a little less complete than it is a little north and east of, of multi-comcity, really.
Bob, like I said, that it's more, it is prescribed pretty much by both our engineering department and the Department of Transportation as to what constitutes a major thoroughfare.
Right, and I was just thinking of, if we're actually talking about a plan and the fact that some parts of the town are hard to reach or stair step, I don't, and if it's not able to do this, and that, that's fine. But it's just interesting, it's mentioned in here and then like if, I just think about how offland Arbor is.
Oh, sure, to get around.
You just, and then you just say, you know, well, historically it's developed that way, well, it just, there's times to fix it and I don't know, that's, I just wondered.
So I have a story there that I'll tell you some other time.
Okay.
Speaking of.
And then my other thing is with the bike lanes on 138. Um, is that something also that's just, did the city plan these or are these proposed from Giffords Webster or?
It's carried forward from here, that this wasn't a major element of this, of this master plan. It's actually carried forward from the last one. I think we may have, we've updated it to reflect a bike lane that's actually in place. But otherwise, it's a carry forward from your last plan.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's why it just seems hodgepodgey to me, that's all.
It actually follows the collector roads pretty closely. If you look at Division and McKenzie are among the streets that are marked for future bike lanes. So I think it is trying to get actually some of that north-south connectivity we were just talking about from a non-motorized perspective. But again, that's, that's really a carry forward from the last comprehensive plan.
Okay.
So is there, can we add something to, I mean, there's a, an extension of the Kiwanis Trail going into the east side of town. Can we add that? I don't think it's on here.
Let me see.
Maybe I'm wrong.
No, it's not. In fact, it stops at Division.
Well.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Division is where it stops, so.
Oh, does it show that? Yeah, in fact, Don, the future trail extension is, it's shown as a future trail.
Okay, I, yeah. I don't have a colored version, so I'm not quite as sophisticated as everybody else, so sorry. Well, it's hard to tell when you don't have it in color.
But it is under construction, so it probably shouldn't be future.
Oh, okay. It's a dotted line.
Yeah, yeah.
But it should be, it's under, I mean, it's, they paved it.
You have more to do, not much.
So would it make sense for us to make it a solid line then?
Yes, yes, solid line through Division.
Yeah.
Okay. Any else?
Um, I do have some questions. Page 28, under demographics, there isn't anything listed on houses built after 2014. Are we dismissing the data from that? Because I know we definitely have, because for certain Habitat for Humanity, I know that they've built some houses during that time period at the very least. So do we just not have that data at all?
It may have been a shortage in the data. What we could do is we could look to see if that is updated in our sources. Because it was originally collected about a year ago and a lot of things got updated in 2020, so there's a chance that there's more data. At this point, I will make sure I'm putting the comment in the right place.
Inspectors department have that information?
Yeah, we, we for sure have it. I don't know what, I mean, you don't want to be mixing it with other data that came from another source.
No.
We have.
Yeah, I'll I'll make sure I figure out the source there and we will see.
It's a small finite number, but there have been some.
Sure, yeah, well, even if it's a small number, though, it's important to reflect it, so.
Lynn, sorry.
Between 2012 and 2019, there were 18 rehabs. So I don't know if that.
That's different than a new bill.
And in 2019 and, or 2020 is when they switched back to new construction.
Okay.
So the permits that would have been pulled by Habitat would have been for rehabs if that plays into this.
Yep. This was, this, the graph was showing your structure built, so probably not the rehabs.
Yeah, I was just thinking that there's, I mean, we've got to have some houses that are built, obviously not many during that period of time.
Yeah.
Obviously, but there's, I've zeroed, just doesn't really seem accurate. Um, page 73, under economic assessment. How were the marketable, marketable opportunities determined? Because some of the numbers in there seem kind of crazy high to me.
Yes, I actually, I understand what you're saying. So this is I actually thought about trying to have Howard here tonight, but he was not able to make it, so let me get there. Because he provided some ranges and when he provided the ranges, I said to him, the low part of these ranges seems a little high to me.
Yeah, I mean, I noted the same thing and I think they're just, it's just way out of.
It's so far, so, so far off, yeah.
Right, and I think part of what he's doing is he's looking at the amount of, of land available. And he's also looking at the I guess the term is leakage, where some of the, the business could potentially be captured and Adrian is going elsewhere. The thing about leakage is that not necessarily all of it could, can always be captured in, in town, you know, because there's just a certain amount of demand that, you know, certain retailers look for when they're thinking about establishing a new location.
Yeah, I mean, while I agree that there's probably room for growth, I can't see us needing 2,000 more homes in Adrian. That's a lot. I can't see us needing any more office space in Adrian because there really aren't any businesses in need of it and we have a lot of empty office space. And 600,000 square feet of commercial is, that's just so much, so much space and I done, all three numbers just seem so, so far out of line.
I, I do agree, they're high numbers. I think one thing that, one point that's made later in the track, in the document is that a lot of that office number and even some of that commercial number is actually not exclusively office and exclusively commercial, a lot of it will actually occur in people's homes or in other non-exclusive spaces.
Oh, exactly, and I, boy, I'm having a hard time even wrapping myself around that, that, an actual statement in the document because it says market opportunities and about 100,000 square feet of office space, much of that achievable through space created in homes. That, that doesn't make any sense to me at all. I mean, it sounds like something that we just pulled out of the air.
Yeah, and it doesn't really seem to add any value to what we're doing here either. I mean, if you're able to work from your home, that's great, but I don't really think that's anything that really affects our planning process in any way. I can't really see any value in that.
How, how they anticipate much of 100,000 square feet of office space coming as created in homes, it's just well, but it's just wrong. Yeah.
Well, it, it would matter if that's where the demand was being captured.
Right, right. If there was that much demand and the fact that we were satisfying it with home-created office space, but it just.
I just don't think we have many office workers around here anymore, period.
And we've got vacant office space.
A lot of vacant.
Lots of vacant office.
Yeah, actually, we discussed the vacant office space last time and that's one of the updates we made here, land use plan was that some of the office is going to transition.
Yep.
To particularly residential. So I mean, as far as this is concerned, I can, I think I could take it back to Howard and have him clarify.
Yeah. Either that or just take that out.
Yeah.
Because it's kind of embarrassing to have that in there.
We have 7,624 housing units, so if there was 100,000 square feet of office created in those, that would be over 1,000 square feet per dwelling unit, housing unit that is converted to office, that doesn't seem.
And Joe, you know, I don't, I'm not looking to be mean here, but part of me says this, big chunks of this read like it was somebody else's plan.
I kind of got that feeling.
I guess I can't speak for that, but I will, I will go back to Howard on that. And see what he can say about it.
Is there anything else?
Yes, page 74. We keep seeing the word rooftops pop up and I tried to like Google it because if, just in case it was something I wasn't familiar with, but I couldn't even find anything that applied that would make any sense.
That was.
So could we get an explanation on what that means?
Or use another word?
Sure, yeah, we can use another word. Really, it's.
Joe, just a minute, please. Joe, hang on a minute, will you say that again so we can all hear you?
Yes.
Page what now?
74.
Bear in mind that some people have different numbers, okay? So is that?
Okay, I was using the document, the, the actual PDF that Jeremiah sent us.
I did too, but not the one he sent at 4:30, because I wasn't home until six, so I don't have that with me.
I didn't know there was another one.
In a number.
I'm using the original one that he sent to us.
Places in the document, it doesn't really matter what page.
Well, it doesn't.
Just a minute, I will offer an explanation. They, they, they use wordings like adding rooftops significantly impacts the community's economic viability. And they use that phrase in a number of different places.
Yeah.
In this example. And the issue is, what is, why do we use?
What is a rooftop?
Why do we use that word?
The point is, when, when Chris asked a question, page 74, sometimes it may not match up, so.
Okay, I'm going off of notes, so unfortunately, that's all that I'm going to be able to do.
Page that starts with economic assessment and then number one.
Yeah.
It's my.
Okay.
Okay.
Like I said, I was using the original document that Jeremiah sent, yeah, yes.
So this was a comment.
Like the original one, yeah. So you have that one too, okay.
This was in Chair Jacobitz's comments as well, and I, I understand the, the point that's being made. It's, it's really referring to dwelling units, so there's really no reason that we can't use another term there. I think in Howard's economic development world, rooftops is a commonly used term, so I think he tends to use it in his own text, but
I mean, it raises the question is if, if it's a 15-unit apartment building, is that one rooftop? Or 15?
Yeah, sure, yeah, right, okay, yeah. So I think dwelling units is clarifying.
Okay.
So we can use a term more like that. Making a note, and there, I think that the word is in there, I don't know, seven or eight times.
Yeah, a lot of times.
Yeah.
What else, Krista?
Um, Bob has kind of already touched on like the streets thing, but I did have one question. Like I saw some of the suggested changes on there were to just switch, like downgrade some streets on just like one or two or three blocks. I didn't see that on the existing plan, like anywhere where that's been done before, so I mean, would that really make sense to downgrade just one block of a street? Because that seems like it would kind of get confusing.
Hang on, I'm going to the map here.
And I, on mine, it's page 125, but obviously not everyone has the same page numbers.
So you're, are you, so are you referring to the differences between the National Class, Functional Classification Map and the Thoroughfare Plan Map, is that?
You had suggested some changes to the thoroughfare map plan. So the actual map itself, I believe it's the page before that.
Titled Thoroughfare Plan, Sand Roadway Functional Classification.
Okay, okay.
And I guess the question is, is, are these, are these, are these things that the city already has in, in plan? Or are these suggestions from you folks?
So let's see. Again, this is a plan that was mostly carried forward from last time.
There are many 134s, 135s, 139s, 138s.
So talking about Locust Street, Greenlee Street, College Avenue.
Exactly.
Church Street, Winter Street, Main Street, okay.
This is just crazy, I mean, I can't follow it to here. 122 is.
For the downgraded roads.
You know, Joe, we're having trouble following, so not all of us have the same draft, apparently. Is there any way you can share your screen and, and then scroll down on the screen to the appropriate content?
Yes, I can do that.
So Joe, I'm looking at the one that Sri sent me and I had to compile it together. Some of our pages are off. I think if we can get it up on the screen, then we can all be on the same page, so to speak. With.
We'll need to expand that quite a bit. Okay.
Numbers, I tried to
big enough where you're seeing it?
Yeah, we can see it.
Okay, all right. So I want to make sure people can actually read it. So this is what it's saying.
So was that your suggestion for changes or was that embodied in a policy that we had elsewhere that you picked up?
It was picked up. Let me see here.
Okay.
I don't want to tell you the wrong thing here, so I am looking.
Those are my comments there.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, sorry. Yeah, so these are carried forward from the comprehensive plan of 2007. As I think, I think I said earlier that the the thoroughfare plan wasn't a major component of this one, of this this project, that was not part of the scope, so we carried forward the suggestions from last time.
So is this something determined by a previous planning commission? So is this something determined by a previous planning commission, is he saying, or? So shouldn't we maybe reevaluate those then? Ourselves, since a lot of times gone by between now and 2007?
That's, yes. Is it, is it really our place to evaluate that, or that would be?
That's what I was asking, that's what I was asking, I didn't know if that's us, or?
We shouldn't stick it back in this plan unless we believe that's still our policy.
Right, right.
But what I'm saying is to answer the question if that's what we want, none of us at this table are qualified to say that looks correct.
Yeah, right.
You know, somebody in the engineering department would say that street has significantly lost traffic.
So we should have Matt look at this.
Okay, all right.
I mean, yes, I can see Greenlee Street has lost a ton because country market moved.
For sure.
The College Avenue is still a busy street, though, right?
Yes.
And to me, it seemed weird to just do one block of Church Street. That was kind of what draw my, drew my attention in the first place, like one block, really, that. It just seems weird. Yeah, so it just seems weird to just, I don't know, very specific.
Yeah, exactly. It's also a state road.
Yeah, so, okay. I guess my last question then of like substance, not just, I mean, I have a ton of grammar, spelling. Page number stuff, but I'd rather just email that. But my last real like content question, my page 139. Where it's talking about the colleges and universities and how many students are living on campus. It says only 27% of Santa Heights students live in college housing. That seems really small, is that correct? Where do we pull that?
Probably from.
Is it?
I honestly, I thought it was much higher.
I would think it was more than 27%.
Depends where he's getting the number from. If you take Santa Heights as a whole, as a whole, a whole entity.
Oh, you're talking about like. To me, it seems like it'd make more sense if we're just talking about our campus.
I would say it would be much higher than that.
Yeah, so maybe we should just specify that, whether we're talking about Santa Heights, all of the campuses, or specifically, and I feel like ours specifically would make. Much more sense for us and our numbers and our plan.
Because what's Adrian College?
Oh, Adrian College is almost all of them, that's what, that's what really struck me as it being very weird.
We can confirm that, that, that we've got the Adrian number there.
Yeah, because that was, I would figure it'd be a lot higher than.
I commented on, in a similar, similarly in a different spot where they said Santa Heights has an enrollment of like, you know, 5,000.
Oh.
Which in fact, they may.
Yeah, but not here. Yeah, okay, see, I maybe just hone it down to our local portion. But other than that, that's, that's the end for me on content.
Okay, thanks. We did find the enrollment number, because I saw that in your comments. So I'm sure we can find the housing number too.
Thank you. I do have a question about kind of the document as a whole entity. And I, I think looking through it the first time I read through, and I haven't, you know, I have only had experience with one other master plan, and that. I must admit, I hadn't looked at it in a long, long time, but there seems that there, there's an organizational problem with this document. I think any master plan needs to look at. Who we are, who we were, who we want to become, and how do we get there? I think that's basically what a master, master plan should do, but it seems to me that there was some going back and forth within. The structure of this piece, so that we had, you know, historical, you know, kind of information here that related to. One place specifically, and then historical information related to another, and, and similarly. Now, I know that once we move what Mike sent to you as that we're going to move to like perhaps to an appendix. That maybe that will also make a difference, and then I think we should, should consider what then the appendix of this document is for also. Is it to show resources? Is it to show, you know, what, what is the function of that appendix? Is it to enlighten something within the, within the text itself? But I just had some problems with the overall organization, and it seemed to me that, that there was not. I'm sure that you have taken a look at the whole document, or somebody at, you know, at your firm has, but it seemed to me as though. Well, it still is a working draft, isn't it? I was going to say, it seemed to be very much a working draft, but I think before we go to a final published piece. Someone really does need to look at the whole organizational, organizational structure of, of this, of this whole document. And make sure that there is a continuity of ideas throughout. I just want to point out that, and this is kind of a case of a little knowledge is a dangerous thing, because in, in June, I went to the Advanced Academy. Of Michigan Citizen Planners, you know, they did the whole advanced, advanced academy. So I was looking, they bring up issues of the missing middle, of course. And been looking for that because I was tuned into that, because we have very, very good presentation. That particular presenter was very good, and so I, I really kind of felt like I got into this, and as I looked through the document. To find where are we talking about missing middle here, you have a section on it. But then there seemed to be contradictions within the text itself about what, about how we would approach that missing middle. So just kind of things like that. I mean, we talk about, you know, the emphasis in one place, it talks about on, in the future, looking still at. Single family. As a significant kind of designation for us, and of course, the Michigan Citizen Planery people are saying we need to do away with that kind of designation altogether. And so I just felt there was a kind of a disconnect there as, as you look at that whole. And I know sometimes when you're doing a big document, as you're doing it piece by piece, which I'm sure you did. That sometimes those pieces don't always make that, that connection back together. But that was kind of, that was one place I thought of, and there was something else that just skipped my mind. I can't remember, you talk about attainable housing, you talk about infill, and, and yet it seems like a lot of that should be brought together. And when we're talking about what housing will look like, we know we have housing deficiencies in certain areas in, in Adrian, so. That was one issue that I had kind of overall. Also, we talked about the need for kind of forward thinking tied to the master plan, and I think. I think you say in the beginning, this master plan should last 10 to 20 years. Correct, yeah, in, in, in 20 years, we know that there will be, you know, a significant number of. Electric vehicles on, on the, on the road, and we need to tie that into our master plan. I don't recall that I saw. That exactly, although I think there was some reference, and also the kind of the solar array idea, which we already had. One issue brought to us of solar array. But I, the emphasis was, was on the fact that it is the master plan that guides us. In, in those kind of, those more specific plans that we make as we go forward, so I had just some issues with that. I also, like Krista, had just some little things about, you know, incorrect word, you know, form instead of from, or and instead of and. That kind of thing, which I don't, I think probably you'll have a finer, final editor go through and do a final read through, I would assume, and make sure that those things are corrected.
Yeah, we've probably caught a lot of them already.
Yeah, you probably have. The farm and farm thing, and the three and two college things, and that sort of thing. Yes, my, the pagination in mind, it doesn't seem to agree with what I, what I'm seeing, I have like three page 53s. Throughout the document or something, so it does make it a little, a little hard, Joe. I had something else, but I don't know what it was. It had to do with density, I, I'll look for it.
See, I don't know if you brought this up or not, I'm not sure, but on my page 135. On housing plan under housing types, there was a chart in the lower left corner that says race distribution by community. It has nothing to do with race. I don't know if she brought that up or not. I didn't see your comments, so I didn't know that.
It's an incorrect header.
For me, it's 27.
Maybe, I guess you did.
Okay, I don't, I don't know.
Few things on the land use plan, but, Joe, so what's the difference between downtown mixed-use residential and downtown mixed-use?
Second.
Or are they the same thing listed in two different contexts? This on page 100, if we could go back to sharing the screen too, that would be helpful, but. My page 100 starts on page 100.
Sorry, I've got some noise behind me. So. In the land use plan.
One more page back.
You were saying downtown mixed-use versus downtown mixed-use residential.
We bring that page up.
Those should be combined. I thought they were combined in the last, latest version, but. Maybe we hadn't done that yet. Yeah, they're the same category.
Oh, that's, yeah, my pages.
Well, we're on page 100, there's, I'll have a markup for you eventually, but. In the second paragraph of that discussion, it says important, it's important to note that in several locations, future land use map includes. Recommendations for land uses beyond the city's boundaries. I don't think that's true. I didn't see any.
We'll double check that.
Which kind of brings up my point as to whose plan is this?
Well, you know, and then, and back in the day, that might have been something we were doing in terms of planning for future annexation land, but.
I believe.
Not something we're doing anymore.
You're also, I mean, but you're also supposed to take into account what you anticipate your neighbors doing, you know, but.
Necessarily on our future.
Right, right, exactly.
Ended up getting carried forward from the old plan and might not be applicable anymore.
Yeah, that's probably, probably what that is.
Then the, you know, I was confused, I understand it ultimately, but. Flexible development designation, which occurs also on page 100 under residential. Uses, but I think is really intended to be broader than residential uses. Then, you know, does not occur under flexible development districts, which is on page 103. So, you know, that may be hominclature, but it was confusing to me. And sticking with the land use plan, and I think this is an important one, on page 107 of my draft. The discussion about accessory dwelling units. It, it's a bunch of questions, and, you know, this is supposed to be our policy statement on what our position on accessory dwelling units is. So I would hope that we'd have some discussion about that and come up with an actual statement that is intended to be our guide. As it relates to allowing those, and I, and I thought somewhere in here, I also read that they, that a suggestion that we didn't allow them, and. Or that we don't, there, there was a discussion about housing units on the east side and the suggestion that we no longer allow conversions. While there's a provision in our zoning ordinance that does allow conversions still, you know. And so if it shouldn't be there anymore, then that may be something that we need to address, again, through the policy statement on that. But for sure, we still have that in the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, you know. Greggy, maybe. I will defer to you, having just looked at the zoning ordinance in one of our plans, what like 2006, 2007 plan, or maybe even an earlier plan. That we've carried, and we carried it forward, said, we will discourage conversions.
Yeah, well, we don't say that seemingly anymore, and we, we deem it to be an accomplishment, but. I'm here to tell you, it's still in the zoning ordinance, and if our policy is it should be amended out of the zoning ordinance, then. We need to restate that policy. You know, somewhere in here.
Yep, yep.
And just, just generally, you know, we ought to have a discussion, it seems to me, about whether or not that, you know. As we try to create more affordable units, whether that's a component of that or not, and all those questions are asked sort of on page. 107, but we need in this document to have the answers to those questions, it seems to me. So I'll leave it at that for the moment, because hopefully that engenders some discussion on that point.
Mr. Taylor? Here, let me share, let me share that text. There, there it is.
It's hard to read when you.
Can you un-highlight it?
Can you un-highlight it, yeah?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Which is.
I mean, honestly, that's a whole other reading.
Yeah, and, and is a, is a tangential, but still related question of conversions, yeah.
Well, you know, we could spend another hour just discussing that right there.
Yeah, I mean, essentially what the plan is calling for right now is for you to have a discussion about it, and if you want to set a firmer policy in the plan, then we need to. We need to figure out some direction.
So what's our, are we trying to get together a full plan tonight?
We're, we're reviewing this draft, that's what we're doing.
Yeah, this is not going to be.
We want to have another workshop just on that issue, we can do that, we want to. Add it to tomorrow's night's agenda, we could do that, you know, however you want to proceed with your, your effort on this, it's up to you. But I think there's probably lots of things in here like that.
Yeah, this is what's frustrating to me right now. I'm, I'm irritated, because none of us can sit here and go. I'm on page three, and we all can go, okay. And go, oh, I might have noticed that too. And I don't know who to be frustrated with. But it's irritating that Don can't look at it, I can't see, oh, Nancy's on page 12, we should all have color. Things here, and we should have had them two weeks ago, not all day long today, and, you know, earlier in the week, and I'm not blaming you, I know it came from them, but. It's, it's, it's frustrating to me, and honestly, they shouldn't have a, there should not be a paragraph in here, it's just questions. It should be. You know, I, I don't understand why there's questions in there, like, if this is supposed to be a reference. you know, I, I don't understand why there's questions in there. Like, if this is supposed to be a reference document, there really shouldn't be many questions in a reference document. I mean, I'm not an English professor. Ask my wife.
That's true.
You know.
As to your.
I barely have a grasp of the language. You know, I can make a pizza. That's, you know.
But in our discussion, in our discussion tonight, we're going from A to Z, back to N to P to Q. And so, you know, we don't really know what the heck we're doing here.
Yep.
We have 16 sections or whatever it is, you know, we've all read through this a couple of times. Maybe we need to do a section by section. Maybe we need to say we should talk about the first seven sections and let's look at section one. Does anybody have any questions here, you know?
Or maybe we could just have another work session after some of this initial stuff is done, the number situation, like we need to like
Move the appendix.
Touch this base, basic stuff, get rid of all the weirdness, like Brian's saying, like it's too hard to concentrate when nothing is in order. Nancy's obviously said nothing's cohesive. Maybe they clean it up a little bit, come back to us with a fresh one that actually has good, solid page numbers and the contents more organized and maybe just highlight any questions that they have for us that clearly need to be answered instead of putting them in this document. But they have questions for us as well that we can consider. So I think that's kind of where everybody's stuck. We're looking at a mess and we don't really know how to proceed from here until it's cleaned up a bit.
I, I think that's a good point. And I like the, the point that, that we perhaps need to look at it, even when we get it cleaned up piece. And I don't mean clean it exactly, but that we still at that point even go by section by section. Yeah. Because I think that at least focuses our mind all, all in the same way. I just ran a, you know, Krista had said something earlier and I thought, oh yeah, I put something down about that. Then I couldn't find the page number. And now I found it, but I think that would be very helpful and, and move those pieces out that Mike thinks should be someplace else in the document.
Yes.
And, yeah. Yeah, if we can possibly do something like that, I think we'd be much more productive.
Joe, can we do that?
Sure.
Yeah. Take out the, or move to the appendix, the things we already talked about and get us a, a cleaned up version in one file with consistent page numbers and an, and an index. Our table of content anyway, table of content.
Index would be extraordinary.
Right, right. No, table of contents.
I reject your honor.
Is that doable?
Yeah, that's, yes, definitely.
Okay.
And once you get it, Jeremiah, I want a color copy. You don't need to give me a binder. Just give me a color copy.
Yes, please.
Yeah.
Use up the city's ink supply.
Yeah.
Well, you guys got a couple million dollars from federal government. We can do this.
Has to be pandemic related expense. Maybe that is.
While, while, but while, before we get too far there. Lynn, did you have any comment you wanted to give us on this? Oh, okay. Please, please, please do. Since you're here for this, I mean.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for copying me on this. I did not read the whole document. I only read the housing plan. I will read the next version. And can I get a color copy too of the full thing?
Absolutely.
I am a wicked editor, so. So I noticed that what was an omission to me in the housing plan was the ADU section. So I'm just glad that Greg brought it up and that's going to be the accessory dwelling units, the ADUs. Because personally, I'm really in support of figuring out how to do that. It's a, it's a strong solution to housing shortage. So whatever is the appropriate way for us to do that with zoning and the right way to do it. But the other thing I wanted to comment on was when we were establishing our focus neighborhood for habitats, neighborhood revitalization, we sought approval from neighborworks. And it took a lot of work. And they really challenged us to know what our rental rate was and the types of units and everything. We eventually decided on the streets of Michigan, Erie, Frank Church and Mami between Dean and Locust. So that's the area that we focused on. And one of the things that they helped us understand is why the rental is so high in Adrian and specifically in that area. And this document references that it, the 46% is likely because we're a college town. Unfortunately, I don't, you guys will decide what goes in this thing. And I don't want to be touting in our comprehensive plan, the correctional facility that we have in Gus Harrison. But it is a big contributor to why we have the number of rentals that we have in this city. There are 2,000, the last, the data that I found just today online was like, there's 2,362 incarcerated individuals there. That's more than the students at Adrian College and Sienna Heights. And there are a number of people, family members who moved to this community so that they can be near their incarcerated family members at Gus Harrison. And it does contribute to why our rental rate is what it is in the city. So it's up to you as to decide if you want to include any of that, but it is part of the explanation for why we have so many rentals in the city of Adrian.
Lynn, can you provide me for any or all of us that wanted that information? Because I have argued time and time again that Gus Harrison was one of the huge contributors to the rental rate on the historic east side. And I've been told time and time again, I didn't know what I was talking about, that that was not a reason, didn't have anything to do with it. But they didn't have an explanation as to what it was. But anything you've got that could provide backup to that, because I've believed it ever since I came back from California.
I will ask DeAngelo if he can get it for me. That information is at Habitat, but it was all part of our research for establishing the focus area where we are measuring data, quality of life data, so that we can come back years later and say, do the people who live here feel like their quality of life is better because of the things that we're doing? So I'll see what I can find, but I know for a fact, neighborworks named it as a reason for the high rental rate. So for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Lawrence, anything that you'd like to contribute to the discussion? Folks, if I real, most of us, Angie Lawrence is the city's new community development director. We met her on a Zoom call, I think last month, was it? But this is the first face to face meeting. So welcome.
Wonderful to meet you all in person, to see you face to face. Many of your observations I shared as well. I did like the use of graphics and some of the explanations. However, I was looking for more specific recommendations and more things that will tell you more of the character and what the community would like to see in their area. Typically, a master plan has a big community participation component. I know that there was COVID-19, but it seems that was a little light, given that it was a survey as opposed to traditionally, they would have more charrette style exercises and, and events. So I know that there are ways to do things online. And maybe we can't go back, but I felt that the community participation was a little light and that there could have been another way, another creative way to really engage and get that input from the, from the public. Because, you know, you really don't want to do a top down plan. You want it to be twofold. You want to get what the community is saying as well as the experience of your officials. So that's really all, all your comments I agreed with. That was the one thing that stuck out to me.
Thank you. Thank you. So for the moment, we're looking to get fresh, updated copies with the sections we discussed, move to the appendix. And perhaps the changes that we discussed this evening implemented in it so that we don't have to rehash that again. And then when we have that, we will schedule work sessions to go over it in at least chunks, maybe like in three chunks. I can't see us doing chapter by chapter by chapter, but
Too many meetings.
Yeah, too many meetings. But if we could do it in a, in, you know, four or five chapters at a time kind of thing. Oh, yes. Mayor Angie, I see your hand up.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you. I knew that that number was wrong when I heard about Santa Heights undergrad, the students living on campus. I actually texted the dean for students while that meeting was going on. It's around 60% of the undergrads live on campus on, on our Adrian campus. So he does think that it must have included our other campuses because those are all commuter campuses. But it is around 60, 6D, six zero, 60%. And they have to live on campus until they're 21 or a senior if they're not within commuting distance anyways. So I, I knew that number seemed wrong as well. So I just wanted to clarify that. I know that that will be looked at further anyways, but they can always contact Santa Heights, but that was the number that I was just giving.
Okay, thank you. And Jacquin?
Yeah. For you. I am Joaquin Ramos. I know it's an unfamiliar name for many of you. But that's my name, Joaquin Ramos. Now, since no one else is about to say their address, I am not saying my address. So first, I want to say that we do need housing here in Adrian. We do need stuff for the middle and we need stuff for the poor. I don't know exactly what records you're looking at. But I can assure you, as someone who has been homeless in this city, has lived in the city my whole life, we do need housing. Also, I would like to express some disappointment in not being to find the agenda on the city website. I kind of assumed that it would be there, but alas, it's not. And also, only a couple of you have done this, but I'm going to go and point this out because I'm sure I'm not the only one having this issue. But please remember to use your microphone. We have a hard time hearing you on Zoom if you don't use your microphone. I could talk about some other things, but that's everything pressing for now. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Appreciate it. Anything else for this evening? Mr. Elliot?
Just maybe a final call to the public, but I don't think there's anybody else.
I don't see anybody else there. Well, we'll, we'll ask us to see.
Gordon, your wife want to say anything? Or you want to say anything?
Joe. Okay, Joe, anything, do you need anything else from us?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Uh, any other public comments? Any other business to come before the planning commission this evening? If not, we would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Or, or motion in support. All those, we still need to be taking a roll call, don't we?
One more day.
Okay.
Why one more day?
Jacobitz?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Weatherby?
Support.
Johnson, who's not here, Watson?
Support.
Taylor?
Support.
Cotton?
Yes.
Gauss?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, everybody.